Muting. All right, we're good.
All set. Okay. Okay, roll call, please.
Commissioner Butler.
Here.
Mr. Clausen.
Here.
Mr. Fitz.
Here.
Mayor Hall. And Mayor Pro Tim Cox.
Here.
The consent agenda, items listed on the consent agenda are considered to be routine in nature and will be enacted by one motion. No separate discussion of these items will occur unless a council member requests the item to be removed from the consent agenda. If an item is removed from the consent agenda, it will be considered elsewhere on the agenda for this meeting. Prior to asking for a motion to approve the consent agenda, the mayor, Mayor Pro Tim, will ask if anyone desires to remove an item from the consent agenda for public discussion. Hearing none, I move that the minutes of the regular meeting of July 1st, 2025, and the bills and payroll for the first half of July 2025 be approved. May I have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Fitz. And roll call, please.
Mr. Butler, yes. Mr. Clausen.
Yes.
Mr. Fitz.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Cox.
Yes.
Presentations, petitions, and communications, this portion of the city council meeting is reserved for persons who desire to address the council. The Illinois Open Meetings Act mandates that the city council may not take action on comments received on matters that have not been identified on this agenda, but the council may direct staff to address the topic or refer the matter for action on the agenda for another meeting. Persons addressing the council are requested to limit their presentation to three minutes and to avoid repetitious comments. We would also ask you to state your name and address for the record as well as stand when speaking. Is there anybody that would like to make any comments that are here, that is here in person? Is there anyone online that would like to make any comments? Okay. Hearing none, we will move to new business, and I believe Commissioner Butler, you have the first item.
Motion to adopt resolution number 2025-3312, approving the agreement with Ameren, Illinois for an electric distribution system, substation, extension of our manufacturing sectors in the Mattoon Enterprise Park, authorizing the mayor to sign the agreement.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Clausen. And roll call.
Any comments or questions?
Excuse me, any comments or questions?
Again, this is just an agreement for that electrical substation with Ameren that we got from DCEO. And so for that grant, and this is just agreement with Ameren and pulls together, so.
It enables us to have a rate of expense for.
Right. Yeah, we'll get our, yeah, our money, our match back if we get properties to locate there. And the more we get, the more we can get back, which we could actually get, receive more money than what we paid out. Very good enough business.
Very good. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Butler.
Yes.
Mr. Clausen.
Yes.
Mr. Fitz.
Yes.
Mr. Pro Tim Cox.
Yes.
Motion to adopt resolution number 2025-3313, waiving certain provisions of the redevelopment agreement between the City of Mattoon, Mattoon Hotel LLC, Mattoon Convention Center LLC, and Illinois Affordable Housing NFP to amend the substantially completed date to December 31, 2023.
And do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Mr. Fitz. Any discussion?
So we had an original agreement with them, they were supposed to have the building constructed by December 31st of 2021. That was when, you know, COVID happened, delays because of product, they had some delays on funding. And so the original agreement, everything was met by the completion date. And we've been working with them on getting all the documentation for TIF reimbursements and business district reimbursements and stuff like that. But didn't quite have all the documentation right. And so the attorneys worked that out, they finally agreed to everything. And they said before we make payment, we should amend this to make sure that it does meet the contract. And like I said, some of those delays were beyond their control. So we're asking to change that, and then we will start doing the reimbursements for the Hilton Garden Inn.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Clausen.
Yes.
Mr. Fitz.
Yes.
Mr. Butler.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Cox.
Yes.
A motion to adopt resolution number 2025-3314, establishing a Vision Zero goal and adopting the 2025 Safety Action Plan. Can I have a second, please?
Second.
Commissioner Butler. And any discussion?
This is part of our safe, uh, safe streets, not safer house, safe streets grant. We are, you know, part of that grant is coming up with a safety action plan that will allow us to ask for future grants for engineering and then construction at a later date. So this is one of the steps that we needed to complete to finalize that grant.
Very good. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Fitz.
Yes.
Commissioner Butler.
Yes.
Mr. Clausen.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Cox.
Yes.
Motion to approve council decision request 2025-2616, approving the water and sewer billing adjustment in the amount of $1,202.90 on behalf of lifelinks located at 308 North Logan, Unit B.
And may I have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Butler. And.
And again, this is just a normal water leak that.
They had a monthly bill that was almost $2,800.
Right.
At least they had a bet, because it's $9,000.
Correct.
Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Butler.
Yes.
Mr. Clausen.
Yes.
Mr. Fitz.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Cox.
Yes.
Motion to approve council decision request 2025-2617, approving the budget amendment to the general fund, hotel motel tax fund, water fund, and sewer fund for the fiscal year ending April 30, 2026.
And the second, please.
Second.
Mr. Clausen.
So the biggest reason with this was with the Emerald Acres Phase Two agreement with the Mattoon Sports Committee. We said that we would actually make sure that we budgeted expenditures and sales tax in Business District and TIF District. And we did have some of that in the bit, in the budget, some of it we didn't really know yet. Now that we've gone through all the stuff for the bonding in Phase Two, we have figures that we've put in, it's basically an in and an out on that aspect. But then while we were in there, there was some also some adjustments to the health fund that we've seen and.
Because of the fact that I can use 100% of the great, as the city's share when they mail it, it's.
35%.
So I felt it was an opportunity to start cleaning up the budget.
Whoever's online that is not muted, if you wouldn't mind muting for the time being.
Thank you. Any further discussion? And roll call.
Mr. Clausen.
Yes.
Mr. Fitz.
Yes.
Mr. Butler.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Cox.
Yes.
Motion to approve council decision request 2025-2618, approving the plans and specifications for the restoration to the east outside portion of the depot and authorizing the solicitation for bids.
And a second, please. Do I have a second? Commissioner Butler. And any discussion?
I'll just say this is to look at the east side of the building on the outside there. We've got faced some soft issues, gutter issues. Take care of the doors and windows and all that repair that needs to be done, and a little bit along the foundation on the outside and get that repaired.
Is that just normal repair work over, that's needed over time, or?
Yeah. These are things, yeah, it's just cumulative over time, especially some of the soft issues that we've seen rotting in there and getting those replaced.
Very good. Anything else? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Fitz.
Yes.
Mr. Butler.
Yes.
Mr. Clausen.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Cox.
Yes.
A motion to approve council decision request 2025-2619, authorizing the purchase of a new SIM line model into DH 230, crack sealer in the amount of $80,000 from CNW Equipment through Sourcewell. Can I have a second, please?
Second, Mayor Pro Tim.
Thank you. Commissioner Fitz.
I'll just say that the crack cell we have is from the 1990s or something like that, it's pretty old.
Close to 30.
Three years old.
Now wait a minute.
Not working.
That wasn't that long ago.
For a machine in it. Not working the best, so yeah, we're, you know, we budgeted for a new one. And so now we are asking to purchase that so we can get to using it this fall.
Very good. And roll call, please.
Mr. Butler.
Yes.
Mr. Clausen.
Yes.
Mr. Fitz.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Cox.
Yes.
Motion to approve council decision request 2025-2620, authorizing the purchase in the amount of $22,165.06 for the premium unlimited extraction annual subscription from Celebrite Inc. for the Police Department investigative purposes and partial reimbursement from outside entities consisting of the Coles County Sheriff, Charleston Police Department, East Central Illinois Drug Task Force, and Eastern Illinois University Police Department.
And do I have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Clausen.
Sam, do you want to talk about that one?
Yeah, this is software and hardware that we pay for annual, so it's nothing new. Last year, we did have to bump up to premium, which did raise the cost quite a bit, which prompted us to get a buy-in from other agencies, our neighboring agencies that actually use it. They're constantly taking us phones to help them out, and we don't like doing it, therefore they don't like buying it. Once they're buying in, it really is the cost that it's always been throughout the years. I will say that last year and again this year, we've also applied for a grant through the OMAG's office. And so hopefully it won't cost us anything.
Anything further? Roll call, please.
Mr. Clausen.
Yes.
Mr. Fitz.
Yes.
Mr. Butler.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Cox.
Yes.
Before comments by council, City Manager Guild, do you have a report, any, anything to report?
You know, we had the incidents out the lake, we're still compiling, we had a meeting with all the employees that worked on it over the weekend. We continue to look at things to keep the lake level, algae in the lake level, we've talked to consultants. We're continuing to look at different ideas of how to keep the algae blooms down. We are feeding carbon out there at the water treatment plant, and so doing everything we can right now. Talking to IEP, talking to IEMA, so everything continues. We've kind of had a meeting the other day, sat down and kind of working on a timeframe of what happened every day and, and the different time periods of testing that the state does. We're not able to test down to that low of a limit, there's not many people that can. Springfield, and there's a place in South Bend, Indiana, and so we kind of rely on them. But we're looking at, seeing if there's ways that we can get testing equipment too. I mean, you know, have to be certified and all that. So we are putting together a draft plan that we will share on the timeframe of what happened. And I'll open up for any questions if you guys have questions.
Well, I have one, the lime, it's like we've talked about this a lot, it may be in place. The lime treatment system, if I'm saying that right, is that, that was going to be our funds, and do we have that in place? And would that have helped with this issue?
So the lime was actually, we were asking for EPA loan, two million dollar loan, it's in budget. We have not heard if we're going to get that loan or not, but I don't believe the lime really.
Whether it is.
It has nothing to do with that part of it.
So it's basically carbon, everything, and we significantly increased the carbon levels.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
So in July of 2018, we experienced a significant water issue related to the algae bloom in Lake Paradise. At this time, the Health Department issued a do not swim advisory for the lake. Officials later detected the toxin at a level that exceeded the state's advisory threshold, and we issued a do not drink. Residents advised to use bottled water for food, drinking, and other activities requiring potable water. The city at that time implemented measures like carbon feed and other chemicals to treat the water and reduce the taste and odor associated with the algae. As soon as they started doing this, the level started coming down, and that lasted a little over 24 hours. Was there a reason why we didn't start doing it earlier whenever levels started to raise this time since we've had that precedence in the past?
So we did, we, the EPA even recommended that we raised it, and we were raising it as the tests were coming in. It had a big spike, I can't say what happened to that. We've also, you know, since that, '18, we bought a couple of machines out there that are supposed to help zap the algae as well. So we've done, we tried to take some proactive measures on that after that last one. Again, there's too many variables that can happen, that makes it hard to, uh, to say when, when the right thing is, but you know, we've monitored numbers, they've gone up, they've gone down, and then it spiked.
So it was tested on July 2nd, and again on July 10th, what was the testing date prior to July 2nd, and what was that level?
Prior to July 2nd, we had results on June 30th, that was .224.
So then did we put carbon in and it lowered it a little to the 216?
I would assume that we did up the carbon, and we had some rain also, I think in that time period. And then, like you said, on the second, the result was .216, so we were trending down. And then on the July 10th, is when we received the .35.
So the difference in the days, as far as like it wasn't a seven day period as it has been previously, was that due to the holiday, do you think?
Yes.
Thanks. Thank you.
Did we reduce carbon from the second to the 10th? Kept it at the same levels?
Or higher?
Or higher.
And that testing schedule is totally at the discretion of the IEP?
Now, when was, uh, the, I think, I assume you went through Senator Rose and maybe State Rep Miller. Were they notified when and what did the state, did they provide any, any resources for basically a three-day emergency like this with City of Mattoon?
So the state hasn't, I mean, the EPA worked with us, yes, we reached out to Chapin's office for some assistance to get some answers with IEP. And IEMA got involved, I think they were here Saturday morning, Saturday morning, and started assisting us with getting different supplies and everything else, so. Thank you.
So before that, do we feel that the increased use of wake boats at INE?
I, I think there is. That wouldn't cause the increase in paradise, right? So, you know, it didn't, it's hard for me to say that, yes, it has increased it in Lake Mattoon, but there is documentation out there saying that it's not good for algae and the likes.
Thank you.
And a lot of these things that we've been discussing and more details and information will be in the timeline report that.
Yes.
You're preparing.
We're preparing that, and like I said, we just met yesterday, tried to get everybody's comments and notes. Trying to keep putting that together. We are going to have some kind of a debrief on what went right, what went wrong here in the next couple of weeks. Again, we're going to try to meet with IEP, have them involved, and IEMA, and Health Department, other, other people that want to be involved in that as well, so agencies.
Will there be a formal post-incident report that's going to be presented out of that meeting?
I would imagine so.
Some of the people in this room were probably on duty, I'm going to guess, more than 72 of the 96 hours over that time period. One, we appreciate all that you always do and continue to step up to the plate. But do any of you, and Mr. Clark here, do you have any, anything you want to add or input that?
I would just say the entire group came together and helping each other out. And it wasn't just this group here, I mean, it's the citizens, it's the businesses in town, it's people outside of Mattoon that came in and helped. I mean, it's, it was a monumental thing to put this together, and Alex did a great job getting me all the water and stuff like that, air and stuff. And Jeff and Sam also, much involved, Ryan involved, but Darcy. It was just a good group, a lot of good conversations, and just put all, got all the information that we could get together and put it together and get it out as quickly as we could.
Yeah, I would, I would agree.
The most frustrating part was the inability of the experts at the state level to provide us with something we could put out. They would all agree with us over the phone, and when we would say, great, let me give us something, they would say, we can't put that in. And that was extremely frustrating when they're supposed to be the ones, you know, assisting us, some guiding. It's not willing to put anything. You know, just, we were trying, we contacted simmers and said, that, those conversations, that answer, can people take a shower? Can people, you know, what do long? Started at 8:30 Saturday, Friday, Friday, starting my days, Friday morning. And it wasn't until 2:30 with some pressure from paper rose that we finally got something that we were able to put out. That was the most frustrating part.
Yeah. Chief, would the protocols have changed from 2018 to now? Based on what we could have done back then? Could we have used that?
Potentially, but I never saw, I wasn't in this position in 18. I personally don't remember 2018 being like this. Yeah. And to be honest, I don't even remember the do not drink order. I remember maybe a boil order, that was a do not drink that I messed up. And then the misinformation, not misinformation. We as public safety have to account for everybody. And the levels for adults, 1.6, we're five times away from it affecting adults. But the .3 is for children, six and under. We couldn't put that liability on our local restaurants that is giving ice and a drink or a soda to it. Say you can only serve us to kids that are six and below.
It was also.
That's an unfair liability to put on that. So, and then that would completely confuse everybody when we say this do not drink order only constitutes this specific age group. Everybody else, you're going to be fine. Then on top of that, you're, these symptoms only start after you have had 10 consecutive days above that level. So what, what information can we put out, what we were putting out there? Still wasn't being grasped, and there were, and rightfully so, there were, we have the same questions that we're trying to get answers to. And no assistance with, from the, from the state organizations in putting that out.
Some of the problem too is that, those levels were for healthy adults only. Everyone has their own definition of healthy, so you know, if you're 80 years old and you have poor kidney function, you're going to hold on to that. So it's not going to be a 10 day, it's going to be a two day. And, and I think that that's where miscommunication, poor communication came into play, is that your definition, my definition, Jim's definition of healthy are all different definitions.
And on the lines of communication, I've been in the fire service for 30 years, and every incident, every fatigue, the one thing that always comes up is communication. You know, and it's, it's hard to try to get that, that important of a message out short of knocking on doors to guarantee, then, you know, there's, it's tough. Yeah, and I, I don't have the answer, we are working on one, we have a meeting Tuesday with our dispatch center on the reverse 911, because the county used to have a code red that would send messages like that out. And they no longer have that. So we didn't think we had access to any type of system like that until we found out this hypos is what it's called. We do have that at the dispatch center, but there's only two people that can send those messages out. So this event has prompted this meeting to get more people be able to send those messages out.
And did I understand this correctly on Saturday, too, and that, when that came up, those two individuals, they have to get approval from above, from at the state in order to send that message out? Which further just delays the communication because they're waiting for somebody up the line to approve that?
Is they've got some pretty, pretty strict guidelines on types of messages? Because the concern is if you start inundating people with these messages, that they go into their phone and they shut back feature off. So with this system, nobody has to register. They do a geofence that around the area that needs to be. You know, to message the weather, and then they can, they send that out. And that is one of the things, I just, we sent the message that we wanted out there to the dispatcher that has the ability to do that. And we, I didn't see, I wasn't able to dictate or explain the area that needed covered. And I still don't know how they designed that geofence to send that message out. So, well, you know, I understand, you know, that there's some folks in gays, I got a phone call from Findlay, somebody up in Mulford County in Findlay wanting to know if we were coming up there to flush their hydrant system. So I had to explain to them that that's their township, you know, for instance, Humboldt. We went up to Apple Cherry Plum, blow the hydrants up to that level, up to that point, and then got ahold of the Humboldt township, do you need to flush your system? Because we know how the water flows in our system, where to flush to keep it moving in the right direction. We have no idea how Humboldt's is like that, so.
Chief, if you, or Kyle wanted to, if, if we have other municipalities or other townships or whatever buying water from City of Mattoon, and we have this incident, how are those groups? Number one, who has that list of who we sell to, number one, and who communicates with them that there's this issue?
So I mean, that is upon us to get that out there to them, and we know who we sell water to, so, um, through agreements. And so we just need to make sure that we are notifying them and get that.
I feel like social peers, the best.
I, I feel like social media is the best.
It's one way.
No matter where you're at.
And then.
You don't see that. And that's exactly what we did with social media. Now, you, you could argue that some people don't have social media. My argument to that would be IPAS's fault as well. If you went to Menards in Effingham for the evening that the tech was sent out, you wouldn't get it because you're not in that geofence.
But I'm talking about somebody communicating with the city rep or municipality, that group of gays or whatever township. But they can actually, then they handed it off to them. I just didn't know that process.
No, I mean, we should be trying to contact them and, and get that out there to them.
And, and did that happen?
And so I don't, I don't know. And that was one of the things.
Recall that.
Heather, Heather's called them. Yeah.
I know Humboldt, we did. Heather, Heather, so yes, if that happens.
We do have others that, you know, are able to tie into our system and stuff too, like clear water and stuff like that, which, you know, of course they're going to see that on social media and they're not going to tie into our own line.
So Jeff, an incident like this, as you look at the city disaster plan, is, is this even addressed in there? So it was pretty much creating as we go. Which obviously, planning now and.
For the most part, I mean, we, Heather did a fabulous job of answering, you know, our questions with our water system. And, but yes, it was a, a graph, you know, this is from scratch. We're trying to get Jeff, trying to think of every conceivable situation that, you know, and that I learned a lot, you know, uh, I know things got missed, uh, if we have to do it. Again, uh, there's lessons learned. I can't, you know, but just, you know, like Dave said, uh, we joked, we had Friday, we were in his office. We had to leave that office because we were banging our heads against the wall so much. Uh, we had to go destroy another. So, uh, but it was awesome, you know, we could have easily said, pardon the thing to us, we, um, but they, you guys have been right there with us and Alex did a fabulous job. The guy from IEM on Saturday. We didn't meet, we didn't meet anything from him. We already had, Alex had it lined up. Uh, you know, water coming in and a huge shout out to Royal King and, uh, the businesses that stepped up to hand out water. Instead of, instead of proud, you know, price gouging. We got one of the, one of the gas stations and found was selling water for forty dollars a case. While another one was handing it out to city residents. So, you know, it's it, it was very, very busy, but it was, it was organized chaos.
Yeah.
It's the best way I can.
Yep.
Describe.
Well, I think even in, uh, times of adversity and when challenging things happen, you learn something from them. As you, you mentioned, we're going to, we're going to learn some things on, on this one, make some, some changes or some notes and things for the future. Um, so. But even in those times of adversity, I mean, it was really good to see how the community and, and neighboring, neighboring communities came together.
With this community.
Yeah.
Support, the volunteers that lined up, uh, like Dave said, people from out of town. Our goal was sensing people down. I just, uh, and that's one of the things in our after action that we want to highlight and try to. If we tried to thank everybody individually, we would miss somebody. And we don't want to do that.
You saw.
So thankful for that, what everybody did.
You saw a lot of the good in people for sure, I think. So, um, that's, that's very refreshing and I think we would be remiss a little bit honestly, if we didn't, uh, keep in mind that there were three fatal accidents on Thursday, the same day that we got the results on the, uh, um, the water issue, uh, the fatal accidents. And then over the weekend, the, um, fires at the Coles County Fairgrounds and the car fire, uh, in a church parking lot and that's at coal station. So.
That punch this week here.
It, uh, uh, it's been a challenging, challenging time. So, um, Hal, do you have anything to?
No, again, I think, um, you know, I was out of town, out of state, but, uh, they stepped up and team worked really well together and uh, had good decisions to make and, and they made a lot of the great decisions that they did make, didn't speed things up as fast as they could and put pressure on people that needed to give us some answers. So, uh, I do thank them a lot and I think they did a really good job. Again, we're always going to learn stuff and even some of the stuff that we had in plans, people that we were going to get water from, tankers from. Some of that information was outdated where the people no longer work for that business, the names and that, and names and phone numbers. Alex?
I, I really want to take a moment and just express my severe gratitude for Jake Bryan. You know, I remember when the chamber dinner, they talked about Justin Gray set me down and just big shoes to fill. He is still. Um, you know, I called him not knowing where we were. He didn't even pause. He said, yes. Okay. So.
Alex, you're doing it again.
He's exhausted.
Be remiss, thanking everyone, even though Kyle was on vacation, every time we called, he answered. He probably put just as many hours on vacation, taken away from his family time, answering the phone. And he was just a, even though he wasn't here. He, he was still helping us and guidance. Dan was, we, everything we ran through him first before we put out. We'd send him a text or call him, give him a break or computer and it, it was, everybody did their part and super proud.
Very good.
I have a statement I would like to make and this is probably going to ruffle some feathers and that's okay. Uh, I do want to take a minute just to share some of my thoughts following the water crisis over the past weekend. First, I want to commend Dave Clark, Ryan Hurst, Sam Gage, the Hilligoss, Alex Wintercheck, Darcy for all your time and dedication. Without you, we would not have been as capable of addressing the issues as we were. We as a community continue to demonstrate compassion for one another in times of need and for this, I am beyond proud to be a part of this community. I want to take a minute to discuss a few other areas. We had some good and some other areas that could have been better times during this crisis. In the end, I think that we had success in ensuring residents of the community received the resources they needed to carry on somewhat of a normal life throughout the weekend. I know we are planning a post incident debriefing as well, and we'll take a deeper dive into areas for improvement. I do believe some of those areas to be communication, as we've discussed, designated emergency plans and transparency. I want to take an opportunity to mention that as council members, we were not given the opportunity to have any input. We weren't offer, we weren't able to offer suggestions or insight based on our professional experience into this situation. In fact, we were basically told to stay out of the way. The information that was communicated as well as the manner in which it was communicated was confusing at best. This leads to distrust and lack of confidence in the leadership of our city. This is a lesson that should have been learned following the global pandemic and not repeated. As a seasoned nurse with over twenty seven years' experience, I also have a master's degree in science, management and leadership, as well as I am an adjunct professor in management and leadership. I do believe that I had some value added insight to offer, but those were dismissed. And I understand that that probably ruffles some feathers, but I believe that we, we did have a system failure at a communication level. Um, and I think that, that that could have been handled differently. And I think that had our suggestions maybe been listened to and our insight and our experiences in dealing in healthcare with a global pandemic maybe would have changed some of the every fifteen minute change in communication. Something that's put out with WCIA is different from W A N D, is different from social media. That's my opinion on it. Thank you for allowing me to say that.
Mayor Protim, I just want to just kind of add a little bit to Erica's statement. I don't think this council will face any, any bigger challenge for that four day period. And I too am disappointed. I think this council should have been convened at roughly, say, five o'clock on Thursday night. Just if nothing else, to get an update on what's going on. If we had any input, and I think all of us might have had a couple of suggestion, suggestions to add to all the professional and the response with all of, all of our employees. But, and maybe if nothing else, declare a, uh, city state of emergency. I don't know if that triggers state resources. But what, but when you have a council and something, this was not a boil order. This was basically four days of, uh, disaster plan that had to be implemented on the fly. There are a lot of good resources sitting around this table and I too was told we would be in your way. Uh, not by you. Um, there's too many cooks in the kitchen. I don't, I don't buy that. I mean, we, we are here to serve. And I think each of us, I, I'm not going to go through, I emailed Dave Clark, I emailed you, seven things that I think can be used for the review. So at a minimum, please incorporate us when we do this review and I'm going to charge you with that. Thank you.
I'm sure those points will be, uh, in the, in the debriefing and looked at, you know, in future in that report. So appreciate it. Yeah. Thank you both. Anything else?
Well, I do have a statement, but, uh, a lot of it reiterates all the positives. Um, I incur with Commissioner Butler and Commissioner Clausen. I, I feel like I feel like we had such good positive interaction after twenty four hours, after that first twenty four hours. And to me, you know, uh, it brought a light to a number of breakdowns in communication. To me, it's, it's all about communication and that, that starts with us. And I feel like that was a, that's, that's where we can improve on. And I too have, um, seven or eight bullet points that I'll submit, uh, to the mayor and to Kyle on, on kind of what I want to see, but it all revolves around communication. Doesn't have anything to do with what the product was that you guys did. Cause it was fantastic after the fact, but it was all, it was all about communication and trying to squelch what's out there and the best way to get it to people. So. That's, that's all I.
Very good. Thank you. Um, not sure if this is against protocol, uh, special situations, I think. Is there anybody here that, um, came in with questions that would like to ask a question or I open it back up for the, uh, presentations and comments if, if you have anything. Come forward, would you come forward and state your, state your name and address, please?
Uh, let's see, uh, thirty one seventeen West Street. Question is about water quality. Where do you find those results? Just consumer water. The water is tested daily or I don't know, tested daily is what I mean.
For some, for some things it is tested daily.
So it says daily or weekly. Where do you find those results from the consumer quality water?
So.
The city's website. I mean, I've looked, I can't.
We, yeah, we don't have them on the city website. You know, it is held out the, the water treatment plant. So, I mean, right now they would have to be FOED or whatever and we could get those out, but we could, you know.
I think there's something on the back of the water.
The back of what?
Back of the water bill. First item.
Heather, ready for that?
So we put out CCR every year.
Yeah.
And gives the generic version of all the testing that we do for the year. Uh, consumer compliance report required by the Environmental Protection Agency.
Was on the line.
Yes, we can find the past, I think, four years for it on the city's website.
And that's a mailing, right? That goes to everybody? Is that correct?
Digital, so it comes on everybody's water bill and it tells you a link to go to, but if you need a copy, you call the water plant and we will mail you the copy.
Awesome. There you are. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? Um, okay. So moving on, um, Hal, I did have a question. Um, Amren has announced they've, uh, there's a eighteen to twenty two percent increase in their, um, in their, in their, in their rates. Um, city has a, the electrical aggregation program. How's, how's that going to?
That will affect our electrical aggregation a little bit. Uh, there is a capacity charge that our contract doesn't lock in the capacity charge. I think there was a three cent, uh, increase in capacity charge here about, uh, month, two months ago. Um, so we did see an increase in that capacity charge. We are good through the end of December. And so in December, we will be negotiating with other communities as well to get a, a better rate. We can always go back to Amren's rate, but we, that is higher right now. So, uh, we are a little bit better off being where we're at.
So this is another plus for the aggregation program that we've, it's saving, saving our citizens money.
Yes.
It goes to minimize.
Everything's raised, but yes, and they say.
But at lesser, at lesser rate than what, what people are seeing in the news.
Yes.
Very good. Okay. All right. Um, did you have anything else on, um?
No.
Okay.
Okay. I'll be willing to hang around and while they go into executive session, I'll be, I'll answer questions you want to find out. Wouldn't they go to the center? I'll do my best.
All right. Thank you, chief.
Thank you, everybody.
Okay. So with that, um, I move that we recess to closed session pursuant to the Illinois Open Meetings Act for the purpose of the discussion of the appointment, compensation, discipline, performance or dismissal of specific employees of the city or legal counsel for the city under five ILCS one two zero two C one. Discussion of reviewing the minutes of meetings lawfully closed for purposes of the semi annual review as mandated by section two point zero six, five ILCS one two zero two C two one. And to discuss a reasonably potential danger to the safety of the public or public property, five L, five ILCS one two zero two C eight seven. Can I have a second, please?
Second.
Commissioner Butler, thank you.
You're too slow.
And roll call.
Commissioner Phipps.
Yes.
Commissioner Butler.
Yes.
Mr. Clausen.
Yes.
Mayor Protim Cox.
Yes. So when we come back from closed session, uh, we will, the only item that we will be taking action on is, uh, releasing of minutes appropriate, um, for disclosure from meetings in closed session in the past. So you're welcome to stay and wait for us or discuss with Chief Hilligoss. Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, I am going to pause the recording and mute until we get back from executive session.
Thanks.
Okay, um, back in sessions, I believe I've got, uh, the, um, next one on the agenda. Council decision request twenty twenty five dash twenty six twenty one, authorizing release of minutes appropriate for disclosure from meetings in closed sessions of the city council and destruction of disclosed executive session minute audio recordings through December twenty twenty three. I would make that motion and. Second, give a second. Commissioner Phipps.
Any discussion on any of those?
It will read differently in the minutes because I have to list each one that we are releasing, but your motion's fine.
Gotcha. Okay. Thank you.
I will fix.
All right. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Butler.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner Phipps.
Yes.
Mayor Protim Cox.
Yes. I am with.
Mayor Protim.
Uh, hold that thought. Hold that thought real quick. Do you have any thoughts on the, um, the closed meetings act and the open meetings, excuse me, open meetings act and any concerns about the text thread?
So again, the one that I sent out, um, is supposed to just send it out to you and if any of you respond, it just comes back to me. But then if I send it out. But then if I send it out again through a different text thing, then it comes, can get to where you're all talking and we can't, we don't want to have that. So again, it's best if you, if you are sending me something, just make sure it's just, just to me and that way everybody else is not on it. Or if you need to send something to somebody else, then, you know, make sure one to me, one to another commissioner, if you need to talk to a commissioner, but just, you know, only one at a time. Just.
So whenever we're having a city emergency, how do you, how, how do we all just do have a communication?
It, it is and a lot of phone calls. I mean, really is really the best. Um, but I mean, as a group, again, we could go into a closed session.
You and you relay what I said to someone else.
Yes. If you want something out to everyone, then.
Send it to you and you relay and release.
Send an email out to everyone.
We were, we were all.
You, you can email, you can have a blind copy of the council.
Right, I'm talking about the texts.
Yeah, the text is, is a lot more difficult, so.
Well, and you know, at what point does an emergency come into play with us or it doesn't?
It doesn't.
Okay.
Yeah. And then the executive session tonight was, you know, just because it was based on, uh, safety of the public. So.
Just one of those things we have to adhere to or we're going to get ourselves in.
Right. And, and the other thing I can say is if, if you won't say it out in the newspaper in public, don't, don't put it in a text or an email. And.
So. How, how much notice do you need for a special council meeting?
Four to eight. Two business days.
Okay. So would it make sense to go ahead and put a notice out now to have a special meeting for 48 hours from now for three days in a row? That way we can at least convene and get updates or just keep it as, as, uh, email updates, phone, phone updates, text update?
I'd like to do the phone updates for first, if that's okay. And then.
Remember, if you have a special meeting, you have to have the session where you allow the public to speak.
Yeah.
So.
You can draw people here to.
Yeah.
Yeah, right.
Things are going great.
That's good points.
But we've agreed to kind of leave it open for now.
Yeah. Yeah. And again, I'm here and, and I'll know a little bit more what's going on and everything than, you know, just phone calls and talking to people. So I'll give that center command point here.
I will say, um, I did appreciate whenever you let us all know prior to us finding out on social media, or for me, I found out it at my own park. That is, that's, that's not a way someone who is in city leadership should, the public shouldn't have information before we do.
And, and we try not to do that. I always try to send stuff to you guys because I don't want you guys reading it from the newspaper. I don't want you guys, and this one was, again, the citizens was trying to get everybody not to drink the water as fast as possible, so.
Right. And other players involved. It was a, I don't know, hopefully a one-off situation. It was a, uh, odd situation, now, not the right phrase, but it was, uh, everything happened very quickly and there were other, other entities involved and so.
It's always a fine line. You're trying to notify everybody you can as fast as possible, but yeah, again, I like to have you guys know before you read it in the paper or see it on the news.
Passing out water and.
Yeah.
Oh, by the web.
Yeah.
This was our level today. Oh, oh, bless it.
That's another issue because I'm not sure how that was getting out. I have no idea, but, um.
I don't know either, but there was people that knew stuff long before.
Does mean like they knew before you did.
Yeah, there was.
And I mean, so.
Yeah.
There's, there's a potential issue there that needs to, you know, be looked into or confidentiality things from, in the workplace.
And again, stuff in the executive session is not supposed to be talked about outside of executive session.
Right. Anything else? I would accept a motion to adjourn.
Mayor Pro Tim, first time Mayor Pro Tim, I make a motion that we adjourn.
Thank you, Commissioner Pips. Do I have a second?
I will second.
Commissioner Clausen, any discussion on said?
Discussion, once you.
I just, I just wanted to throw that out there one more time.
That's it.
Would you like to take roll call?
Yeah, I would.
All right.
Commissioner Claus?
Yes.
Commissioner Pips?
Yes.
Commissioner Butler?
No.
Always one.
Mayor Pro Tim?
Yes. We're adjourned. Thank you very much.